...from March twenty fifth, twenty twenty. This is a special meeting on one topic on the agenda today is Petersburg Public Code ninety, under one. But that being said, we're the first please call the roll.
Randy?
Here.
Mark?
Mark.
Bob?
Here.
Jeff?
Here.
Jay?
Here.
Chelsea?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, member Norheim is excused today. He's not extending him up to in contact. So first item on the agenda, those persons to be heard, whatever's on the agenda. Uh, member Norheim contacted the court and he has some comments that he would like to add into the, the, the record today.
Thank you, Mayor Jensen. Sorry I didn't call his name. I should have. Okay, so Taylor, um, his comments are this. After the governor's latest mandate, I was not anticipating any further action required from the Assembly. In keeping with our oaths of office and the Constitution, remember that we are tasked with maintaining life, liberty, and property. To my mind, it should be in that order. After this meeting, however, the vote goes, the Assembly should start focusing on keeping the businesses and workers from fa- from failing. Not everyone can afford to be out of work. Best regards, Taylor Norheim.
Okay, thank you, Debbie. And I would like to mention that, um, in the recent past, we have received thirty-six emails, uh, on this COVID nineteen topic. Um, in particular, the, uh, um, stay at home, as I said, we were never that, uh, term right, or shelter at home, they make, uh, ask from the mayor, now they have this mandate in place. And I asked the clerk today to see if you would be a tally on the people that were in favor, like, uh, uh, the Assembly moving forward, if there was talking about mandate, and how many people are against it. Kirk Thompson, did you come up with that information?
I did, Mayor Jensen. Um, I counted forty comments in favor of the mandate, um, and two against. There were four that were necessarily not for or against.
Okay, thank you. Um, with that being said, I just want to clarify something for member Lynn, who didn't attend the last meeting by throwing D two other, um, uh, member Lynn, we sent only for Assembly alphabetically, so now they're in the same room to recognize, um, uh, what someone, anyone else in the speaking. So, but that being said, uh, first of all, I need to entertain a motion, I guess, with my three persons to be heard, then is that correct, Kirk Thompson?
That is correct. We have no one in the room except for Officer Walker and myself, so.
Okay, all right, thank you for that information as well as his question. Uh, so now, item two, my goodness, it's twenty dash one thirty-three, Petersburg Public Code eight, member one. I entertain a motion to approve this.
Some of. Second.
Uh, motion made by member Muti and seconded by member Lynn. So that brings us to discussion. And, um, so, member Lynn, uh, you'll be the first one to, uh, have your input. And you can go through the order, alphabetically as many times as you need to, uh, but it is an amendment to be able to address amendments, I can come up with any.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Jensen. Just a couple of comments. I've read all the letters that have come to us. Um, I want to say that I read Jim Floyd's recent letter to us, and I, um, I, if we go along with this, I strongly hope that we're willing, and I'm, I will do it right now, but I'm, we're willing to follow Jim's advice and Carl's, uh, recommendation from that. And with that, I'll stop for the minute. Thank you.
Member Lynn, um, um, member Norholm, what have comments today?
Um, yeah, honestly, I'm kind of wavering on this. I understand the importance of shelter in place. Um, I've been home for days, so I don't know, but to me, it feels like all the businesses are acting according to our alert, things like people are being proactive, and I don't necessarily know if a mandate is necessary at this point. And that's all I got for now.
Okay, thank you for your input today and, uh, that part. And member Muti?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have about, it looks like seven questions, but I'd like to start out with an amendment to this, uh, health mandate, number one.
Okay, another amendment.
Um, I am referring to page three, section two, subsection F regarding grocery stores, stores.
Yes, I have a question, Lynn.
I would like to change the wording, a maximum of ten patrons to a maximum of twenty-five patrons.
Okay, so, in particular, is that like under two, um, what number is that, what's the number?
F.
Well, it's under letter number F.
Okay, got it. Can you let's change the number from ten to twenty-five, I said, you have a second for that motion?
Oh, second.
Second.
The motion made by member Muti, seconded by member Lynn, to change the number of patrons that can be on the premises of a grocery store, a grocery store, from ten to twenty-five. Um, as long as the social distancing, I believe that was changed as well, or could be changed as well, um, because the amendment declared that wasn't even the motion, so let's just adjust the, uh, ten patrons to twenty-five.
Mr. Mayor?
You have a second amendment?
Mr. Mayor?
Just one more, just one more, Muti.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I spoke with both managers this afternoon, um, and they're willing to do whatever is needed, but the ten patron restriction, um, would be a little bit difficult for them to enforce, and they could understa- they could deal with it better if we moved it to twenty-five patrons, um, and they would be, they would appreciate that.
Okay, um, any other comments on this amendment to section two F?
I have one, Mr. Mayor, if nobody else does.
Okay, Kirk Thompson?
Thank you. I just thought I should point out that if we change that number from ten to twenty-five, it not only applies to Hammer and Weacon Grocery and Trading Union Grocery, it also applies to the marijuana dispensary, the convenience store, and other similar establishments, blah, blah, blah. So I think that it needs to be more specific if we're saying only for the large grocery stores.
Um, does make total sense, so.
So my suggestion would, would actually to be to just, uh, put in another sentence or two, um, explaining that those two grocery stores would be allowed to have a maximum of twenty-five patrons on the premises, or, or whatever it is you guys decide.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yes.
This is Carl Hagerman. Can I offer a comment, please?
Um, sure, Carl.
Uh, sorry to interrupt, but, um, so, I, I just wanted to make a point that the WBA is right, that this applies to more of the gro- more than just the grocery stores, but, um, it is a fact that it is qualified, that it's a maximum of twenty-five patrons if the amendment is approved, and they must still, um, meet all separation distances, social distancing, uh, values. So, it, if there's, uh, if there's an issue in any store with patrons meeting that six foot separation distance, then there'll have to be fewer people, less than twenty-five. So it's kind of self-regulating somewhat, the, uh, the owners of these businesses will have to regulate that.
I see.
Okay, are there any other comments from Assembly members on this amendment?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, please.
Uh, member Stanton Gregory, please.
O- okay.
Um, yeah, I'll be voting for this amendment. I, I think, you know, an underlying part of this is going to be all about the citizens, making sure we respect that social distancing. If the business owners say this works for them, um, I'll definitely trust that, and I'll be voting for the amendment. And just as a, a quick sidebar, uh, thank you, Mr. Hagerman, for interjecting now and again. As incident commander, you're, you know, so close to this, that, uh, sometimes your clarifying comments can just follow us, as was the last one. That's all.
Okay, member Stanton Gregory, are there any other comments on this amendment to change section two F from ten patrons to twenty-five patrons, as long as social distancing is kept, um, in place?
Mr. Mayor?
Do you have another quote on the rule on the amendment?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
So is the amendment going to be with the addition of Kirk Thompson's, um, comments regarding the two grocery stores in town, whether they're identified as Hammer and Weacon or Trading Union?
Well, after, uh, Mr. Hagerman gave the explanation that, uh, even if there was a true maximum of twenty-five patrons in the stores, including, for instance, um, um, convenience store, marijuana dispensary, food banks, et cetera, if the social distancing isn't kept, then the store has to regulate the number of people that are feeling, is , uh, jumping off their sidelines. So I don't think there's any amendment to, um, make the maximum twenty-five to just Trading Union on Main Street and Hammer and Weacon Grocery Store, uh, bottom of the guide. Um, any other comments on the amendment? And the court call the roll?
Jeff?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Okay, so the First Amendment on this, uh, order today has passed unanimously with a six one vote, and that, uh, changes the number of patrons in a business, uh, that is most of those, uh, essential, from ten patrons to twenty-five. Um, any other questions on this, uh, order as amendment?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have another amendment.
Um, that's member Muti.
Um, under section two, essential business activities and government services are following. Under the same subsection F, I would like to delete, on the bottom of the page, um, I would like to delete the words.
Um, what, excuse me, member Muti, what was that?
It is page four. It starts on page three, but it goes to page four. It's in regards to, um, the last text, the last sentence on page three, and it reads, "If any patron fails to maintain the social distancing requirement, staff of the business shall demand that the patron immediately exit the premises." And I'd like to remove that sentence.
Give me a second. Give me a second, that, uh, amendment fails. Um, is there any other discussion on the, uh, on, um, question, on the amendment?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I had five questions.
Number Muti.
Thank you. So can Carl explain to me what has changed since last Sunday, uh, has us meeting today?
Well, well, maybe that Carl can, but, uh, I got notified yesterday after just the last meeting, and then this, um, mandate order was draft, drafted up, uh, this, the Hagerman asked if they'd have another meeting, so that's why I called it. And, uh, Carl, can you explain, uh, uh, what's taking place to, uh, ask for this meeting?
Yes, I can, Mr. Mayor. So, uh, thank you for your question, member Muti. Um, at, at the meeting at Sunday, where the Assembly approved the, uh, health alert, number one, uh, calling the community to an advisory action of shelter in place, um, at that, at that meeting, we were, uh, made aware of the multiple emails of citizens, uh, calling for a mandate, uh, to be put in place and not, uh, simply an advisory. And, uh, after that meeting, uh, the mayor did contact me, asked me to work on that mandate, uh, as appeared to be the consensus of the Assembly. Um, since that time, um, the situation at Ketchikan has grown worse as far as positive cases. Uh, we have done more testing in Petersburg, no positive cases have arisen yet. Uh, there's been a total of, uh, thirteen tests taken, only four, uh, negative results have, have come back, so there are nine cases that are pen- nine tests that are pending. Um, that, it's, it's just very vital that this community gets on top of, uh, uh, the shelter in place, stay at home, stay at home, uh, social distancing aspects of the, uh, management of this, this virus. And, uh, uh, the, uh, medical community is very supportive of taking the next step and going to a mandate. Um, a mandate will allow enforcement action to occur, but there are, uh, non-compliance issues in the community, whereas a, uh, the advisory, uh, health alert, uh, does not allow that. And, and so this, uh, mandate is coming forward to take the next step in the, uh, seriousness of, of, of our response to the virus threat. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, uh, thank you, uh, uh, Mr. Hagerman, and, uh, yep, um.
Mr. Mayor?
Question on the motion as it's amended.
Mr. Mayor, I have like five or six questions that I think we need to address here before I give up the, my turn here.
Are they all to the same person, or?
Yes, they are.
Um, both either one by one, then, 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 Muti.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In section one, at section A, number one, talking about the essential activities are the following, where did that list originate at?
Uh, through, through the mayor, this is Carl Hagerman. Um, that list of essential activities was drafted by our attorney, Sarah Hydeman, and it is based on, um, other communities mandates of, of shelter in place, um, other governmental, uh, lists of critical and essential duties, and it also, uh, reflects, uh, some aspects of the health alert that was passed last Sunday.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
My next question is?
My next question is, under section A, under, um, number, subsection one, other activities determined to be essential by written consent of the incident commander. Can you explain to me how that will be, what are the mechanics there?
Yeah, through, through the mayor, this is Carl. Um, so if, uh, if a business, um, feels that they are misclassified as non-essential, um, the, the list of essential businesses is quite exhaustive, uh, many businesses in Petersburg do fall under that list, but if a business, uh, would like to be considered essential and can make the case, uh, based on, um, other lists of critical infrastructure, uh, from the state or federal, uh, sources, um, they can, uh, send me an email or give me a call, uh, we'll get together and I'll make a determination, uh, on whether they're essential or non-essential.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
My next question, if you have more?
I do. Um, under section A, starting on page three, a similar question, where does that list, um, originate from, as the essential business activities and government services?
The, yeah, it's, uh, through the mayor. Um, that list also is, uh, been developed from, uh, other critical infrastructure lists and legal advice from the borough's attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Another question that I have, there's a big issue that we're going to be looking at, uh, is a big topic of discussion in the community, is how, how will this mandate be enforced? Um, are we looking at the local police department, uh, Forest Service, National Marine Fisheries, or State Troopers to help us with this, or are we looking to have more community-wide, um, just policing, I guess, if you would?
Uh, through the mayor. Um, you know, we, we want the community to do what is best. Um, this, this mandate, although it is a health order, uh, we're really employing our citizens to read, read the mandate and follow it to the best of their ability. Um, it is an order, so enforcement is, is possible. Um, we are, we rely on our local law enforcement, um, our, our police department to perform that. Um, they, they, um, will do the best they can to, to enforce this, but again, they, I, I believe, after speaking with Chief Kerr a few times about this issue, they will try to do, um, what is right to guide people towards compliance and not immediately jump to heavy-handed actions. Um, again, this is, this is an issue, this is a, a situation that we're all in, that requires, uh, understanding, uh, respect for our neighbors, um, and acceptance of, of what we're dealing with, and, uh, you know, writing, uh, a bunch of tickets or, or even, you know, incarcerating somebody does, you know, it doesn't really help with that. Um, but it is possible, and this, and this, uh, mandate does, um, bring that into play. So I, I understand the question, but I think in most part, we're just expecting the community to please, um, comply and, uh, and not subject anyone to, you know, possible enforcement action.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, my last question I have is, you know, I'd like to hear from Carl about how we, I guess, um, understanding how when the commercial fishing fleet either gets back from Craig and the Rock Kelp Fisheries or other boats traveling from other towns, um, any advice for the commercial fishing fleet for their day-to-day business of moving from a pound fishery to a longline fishery?
Um, through the mayor, um, so that's, this question's come up a lot, and, um, with, with all the changes and everything happening so quickly, uh, the travel mandate that, that came from the state, um, our health alert that we, uh, that the Assembly passed on Sunday, uh, all that gets kind of thrown in the mix, and you try to, to, to make the best sense out of it as you can, uh, in consideration of, uh, people working on the water and, and needing to, um, uh, perform those essential services. Um, we are, we're working on some much clearer signage and, and flyers that we'll be able to hand out to, uh, anybody that enters the harbor. Um, I think that will help out a lot. Um, it's, it's, uh, it, it's not really clear, and unfortunately, the state didn't help us a whole lot with the travel mandate. I think they, they let it do water some, somewhat on, on the, on the marine side of things, um, but, uh, uh, very soon, uh, hopefully this evening or tomorrow morning, we'll have, uh, better signage and clearer instruction for how people need to, uh, prepare and act once they, uh, come into the harbor, uh, from the marine side of things. Uh, we, we are very aware of the need to conduct business, uh, in the harbor and, and in the fisheries, and we, we want to allow that as much as possible, um, but again, the, the primary concern is, um, keeping our residents safe, keeping the fishing fleet safe, uh, crewmen and skippers, um, they all need to stay healthy as well. So it's, uh, there, there are conditions for everyone to follow, and, um, my hope is that, that that will occur and that everybody will be able to continue somewhat normal, but, um, the, the normalcy of our lives has, has really gone away, so we are, uh, we're working hard to, to make that clear, but I, I don't know that I can offer, uh, specific advice in this meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Um, this, uh, this, uh, motion is, uh, amended, and this, uh, amendment.
Some of.
Wait, uh.
Is that motion amended?
Well, a personal comment, I can re-
Hey, hang on, Mr. Mayor, may I suggest going to the alphabetical, alphabetical order as we discussed?
Okay, that makes sense, uh, let me just, uh, I would be member Norheim, and he's up, so that would be member Stanton Gregory.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'll be voting for this as amended. I think, uh, incident commander Hagerman touched on, in my opinion, the most important reason of why he brought, he thinks this is important, is, uh, the medical professionals in our community, the people who are truly on the front lines, the scientists, if you will, uh, support this. They feel it's important for our community, and those are the people I feel I need to look to at this time. Um, secondarily, I'm glad we're pass- hopefully passing this right now, is, we've got a lot of friends south, and they've been asking what's been going on with us, and so many of them have said they'd wished their communities had taken, uh, taken action sooner. I mean, one of the duties, I think, of where we are in Alaska right now is that this has come here late, so you can learn from other communities' mistakes. And we have an opportunity right now to, you know, pass this and, and beyond passing this, the idea of us as the citizens following it, trying to keep, look out for our neighbors, look after our friends, our elderly, our young, um, you know, nothing in this order says we shouldn't be outside getting fresh air, we should. I heard, uh, Phil on the radio earlier today saying, yes, that is therapeutic and healthy, get as much air as you can while keeping distance, exercise, be healthy. Um, and obviously, you know, what we're, what we're talking about right now doesn't impact any of that, it's, when the justice settles, the, the, I want us to be honest with citizens, make sure we listen to it and, uh, respect each other's boundaries and, uh, try to keep each other safe. Again, I'll, uh, based on the science and the medical community, I'll most certainly be voting yes. Thank you.
That leaves me, correct, Mayor?
Uh, yeah, I recognize you, maybe I-
Oh, sorry, I didn't hear.
Yeah, you're-
Um, I'll be, yeah, thank you, um, I'll, I'll be voting for this. Thank you to all the public for their engagement on this, and thank you to Carl for all of his work. Um, I would like to echo Stanton Gregory's comments on doing this in reaction to the professionals in our community tasking us with protecting the health and safety of our community members. And I would also like to emphasize to workers, not only healthcare, but people around the community that find yourself in one of these essential businesses, if you see yourself in a position to suggest a better practice for you as an employee, please speak up to us. It's our job to advocate for you and help keep you safe. So please, the Assembly is here to listen to you, and I'll be voting for this and doing whatever we can to help keep as many people safe in our community as possible.
I don't think we're picking you up, Mr. Mayor.
Um, can you hear me?
I got you now.
Hello, yeah, I don't know what's going on down here, folks swimming around in the wind, so I might be bothered, but, um, okay, so I go back to the top of the list, uh, member Lynn, do you have any more input today?
I do. Um, yeah, thank, I want to thank Carl and the team that's been working on this, uh, I fully, uh, think that they have done it quite a professional and a very good job, and I'm, you know, I'm thankful we have them in place. First comment. Second comment is that I have a daughter who's been working on new testing procedures, microbiologists, for the past fourteen hours a day for the last two weeks and is continuing. From what she tells me, I think this is the right way to go. Um, I know it's an inconvenience for people, but listening to what she tells me, um, I'm definitely in favor of this.
Okay, thank you, member Lynn. Uh, member Norholm, do you have any more, uh, input today?
I don't know, not at this point.
Okay, thank you. Um, that brings us back to member Muti.
Nothing more at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, member Stanton Gregory or member Trembley, I guess, you know, you can just- Um, uh, Member Stanton Gregor, or Member Trembley, I guess, you know, you just spoke on the side of Mucci's left one more time.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, last one.
Actually, oh, um, I'll be, I would like, yeah, I'd like to comment on something Norheim spoke to in his comment, um, about his concerns for the economical being of the community, and I'm right there with him. It'd be really great, the Juno bill and the Washington DC stimulus bill, it would be really nice if we could have a special meeting about the economics of everything soon in consultation with Liz and Carl, just to get, give community members a chance to get a sense of where we are in relation to those larger things that are happening, as well as figuring out where we at the borough level could be getting involved to help people. Um, money, money is, the only thing is considering all of this, so I understand the economic concerns that people are having, and I think it's up to us to start thinking about those sooner rather than later as well. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you. Small calls up to, um, originally, I, sorry. Um, circulating around town, and she, let's actually take the place, and I don't have a, you know, a, a restaurant out, but this, except for, we're talking to people, they say people look like they're disrespectful and trying to abide by the social distancing. And, you know, I, I don't want this to make people think that, you know, I would be voting in favor of this, but I want to lay down some kind of a stricter law. I just want people to be aware of the seriousness of this situation. Um, my neighbors, Ketchikan, has, uh, about eight, uh, cases right now positive tests, but, uh, and, uh, professional, medical professionals giving a, uh, kind of a, you know, how, and toward how fast they can grow, and one person, the first person to have this infected for, or both infected for, almost two to more, that's sixteen and so on. So, that may be a little bit overreactive, but in the week, they could have had about maybe, maybe a couple, carrying forward a little bit six hundred people, so I think being proactive and trying to, you know, uh, practice social distancing and, of course, and, and good hygiene, um, and, uh, if you're sick, um, I think that's probably still the most important thing, but I, I, I'm hoping past this, uh, this, uh, order today, this mandate. That's Carl input. Uh, forgive, let me, so the member one more chance, let's, uh, uh, get recognized from, from me if you'd like to speak some more.
Mr. Mayor, this is Carl Hagerman again.
Yes, Carl.
Uh, thank you. Um, so I just wanted to be clear on the amendment, so that the amendment, as, as it stands right now, is to allow a maximum of twenty-five patrons into the, uh, grocery stores and, and the, the other stores in that section of the, of the mandate. The, uh, the, the letter earlier today from Mr. Floyd also spoke about increasing the number of patrons in the hardware stores. Is, uh, is that not going to happen at this time?
I don't know that that was in the motion, um, and I've read that letter, but I can't recall, it went from five, which is number, did he propose ten?
That, that is correct.
So, with that being said, um, give one more chance, if the assembly member would like to make a motion for that effect, uh, you, you would call it for the board.
Mr. Mayor?
Mucci.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, if that would make it easier on Carl or either the hardware stores and the grocery stores, I'd be happy to amend my amendment.
Uh, I guess we just need another amendment to change from five to ten in the hardware stores, if that was your wish, if I understood you correctly.
So moved. I'll make, yeah, I'll make that amendment, Mr. Mayor.
So, you would like to make a motion to amend the maximum of patrons in the hardware store from five to ten, as long as they maintain the proper social distancing, which we have kept at sixteen, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct.
So, second from that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, that's the second from, uh, Member Merow, I believe. So, is there any discussion on this proposed amendment from Member Mucci, um, to increase the number of patrons in the hardware store from five to ten? And I believe, if we're talking hardware store, would that be having a weak on hardware store? Mr. Hagerman, can you, um, comment on that? I mean, I know we have other people that sell, um, hardware in Italian, and, and supplies, et cetera.
Uh, um, yes, Mr. Mayor. So, this, this would, uh, pertain to, uh, Section Two, point, um, or letter L, um, and it would pertain to hardware stores and automobile slash marine supply stores, such businesses shall utilize, uh, yeah, that's not, that's not part of the thing. So, it'll be hardware stores, automobile and marine supply stores.
Okay, so that's what I was just trying to clarify, so, without being specific, and I don't think that that is the right thing to do, to allow one, uh, merchant, but, when you got, to, uh, have that, uh, ability to have more patrons in a store at one time. I mean, it all comes back in my mind to the social distancing, which we're, we're still keeping at sixteen. So, is there any other discussions on, uh, uh, this amendment?
I have a concern, so much of our discussion is on only the social distancing, which is a huge component of it, but so is overall sanitation practice and the ability of keeping, uh, common areas that are touched clean, and so I would encourage Carl with how these amendments go, this is a mandate that gives enforcement power, and so I would hope that that enforcement of sanitation of common spaces be looked at as closely as the social distance and be considered, because we know how long the virus can live on surfaces, we know how many people over the course of the day, ten people at a time, it can go on, so, um, I don't want that to get lost in the discussion of the social distancing. That's my comment.
Okay, any other assembly members have, uh, comment on this, uh, amendment to change the number from five to ten for these hardware stores and marine supply stores, et cetera? Okay, let the court call the, uh, call the roll on this amendment.
Yes, Chelsea?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Mark? Sorry, Mayor, try again, please.
Um, I'm not hearing you, um, yeah, I vote yes.
Th- thank you. Jeff?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Thank you, unanimous.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, of course, and got a minute out here. So, now the amendment passes unanimously, that brings us back to the motion, um, to adopt this, uh, um, order, um, Sunday, um, the first amendment, health mandate, as it's been proposed, uh, to amend in place. Uh, if you want a discussion, let the court call the roll.
Mr. Mayor, one last thing, please. Mr. Mayor, one last thing.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's just a broad reminder, we're all neighbors in this town, and we take it upon to be kind and patient with one another. We, we're all in this together, and if we stick together and see ourselves as neighbors, well, neighbors will come out of this together, so, uh, I look forward to working with all of you, all this in the community to get through this time. That is all, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Member Stanton Gregor. Um, um, is there anything else from any of the other assembly members? Okay, let the court, let the court call the roll.
Randy?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Chelsea?
Yes.
And Jeff?
Yes.
Thank you, unanimous.
Uh, uh, the, the, all your classes, uh, is two amendments and a six man vote, and that brings us to retaining the motion to adjourn. Download, so moved. Okay, it sounds like there's been a, um, motion to adjourn in a second, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, um, special meaning to me, so, thank you to everybody for calling in.